All right, I'm calling November 20th Planning Commission meeting order. So on the table on the side, we have comment cards. So for one of our applicants, one of our discussions today, please put a comment card. I will ask for those before we start. We can, our staff will... So roll call. Jason Menendez is one here. David Gondringer, Mr. Chair.
Here.
Jason Crowe is...
Hey, Dave Maple.
Here.
Leroy Gondringer.
Here.
Rich Mikeish.
Here.
Tara Ostendorf is absent and Joe Parsons.
Is here.
Is here, representing the county commission. So we'll start by a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so do you have any comment cards for this meeting? Because, all right, so we're seeing, we're talking, a rezoning request submitted by Joseph and Amy Meyer of Rice, Minnesota. Are you here, Joseph and Amy, if you want to take a seat at the table up here?
Speaker's on. Jennifer, are they active?
Nope. When you're ready to speak, if you could press the button to turn on the microphones, that'd be great.
All right, so we're here today to consider a rezoning request submitted by Joseph and Amy Meyer of Rice, Minnesota, according to section 4.10 of Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance Number 439, to rezone 40 acres from the Transitional 20, T-20 zoning district, to the Agricultural 40, A40 zoning district. The property is southeast corner, northwest corner, lying three quarters of a mile east of County Road 2 in section 18 of Brockway Township. The property is not addressed. So members who visited the site, I was in the area, but it's landlocked, right? All right, anybody make it? So David.
Same, I was in the area.
Okay, Dave?
No.
Larry, Leroy?
Yes.
Rich?
In the area.
Joe?
I could see it.
Okay. Staff report, please.
Okay, good evening, Planning Commission members. So this rezoning request is to change this 40-acre parcel from the T-20 zoning district to the A40. The property owners also own land to the southwest. There's, there's two 40s that they own to the southwest and here, let me get my pointer out. Yep, right there. So they own both of these 40s. And what they would like to do is have another building site on, on this 40, but they don't have any building entitlements available. So, and I'll point back here, too. So they would like another building site on this 40. So what they would like to do is transfer a building entitlement from the 40 acres in question over to the west, but under the current T-20 zoning, that's not allowed. You can't move an entitlement from a T-20 district to an AEG district. So the request for the rezoning is, that's their plan, at least is to, to use that entitlement on their property to the west if the rezoning is approved. And an alternative to a rezoning would be to obtain a building entitlement from an adjacent property. So as we, as you mentioned, the 40 acres isn't addressed, it's landlocked. It is entirely wooded, at least two-thirds of it is wetland. We didn't run a lease-to-score because we're going, the, the request is to go to AEG, so we didn't run the lease-to-score on it. Looking at the area around here, there's about 18 homes and one feedlot within a half a mile of this property. The zoning, oh yeah, that shows the wetlands there. The National Wetland Inventory, so you can see a lot of that property under consideration as wetland. And on the zoning map, so the, the area under request is that black hashed property. So everything around it is either T-20 or R-10. And so their request is to go to the AEG 40. So that gives you an idea of what the zoning around them looks like. The future land use map, so this is a map that shows the county's plans for the area, kind of guides, supposed to guide the growth. And so the yellow and green mean that it's in an agricultural or limited development plant area on the plan. And the green signifies natural resource overlay. And that's probably due to the amount of wetlands and woods that are there. So under the current zoning, they are allowed two residential dwelling units. And if the rezoning is approved to AEG, they'd only be allowed one. Brockway Township did review the rezoning request and recommended approval. And this will go to the county commissioners on December 2nd at their next meeting. And that's all I have.
So applicants, take your name and address, please.
Joe Meyer. Joe Meyer, 41450 County Road 2, Rice, Minnesota.
Amy Meyer, same address, 41450 County Road 2, Rice, Minnesota.
Anything to add to the staff report?
No, I mean, I, I guess I'd be willing to answer any questions you have, but I, I mean, it's fairly cut and dry. We just are looking for a building entitlement and, you know, I don't like giving up two building entitlements to get one, but I'm willing to do that. I don't think that any time in the near future, anybody would build on that particular property. So I would be okay with transferring, you know, losing one building entitlement to gain technically one, but to move it to a different spot.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Commission questions for staff or the applicant? So I had two. Being a landlocked parcel, do you let, so should this parcel be sold in the future? Just not saying you're going to, but hypothetically. Does access have to be guaranteed to the parcel?
Mr. Chair, that's, I guess it's not a zoning issue. It is what it is. So if they were to sell it, that would be up to them or a buyer to worry about that.
Okay. And then, so should the, should the board, the planning commission approve the rezoning to the A40? It's not adjacent to their existing parcels. Is that a problem for transferring the entitlement?
Yeah, that's a great question. They are able to move the entitlement as long as the sending parcel and the receiving parcel are in the same name, same ownership for at least three years, then they can move that, even if it's not contiguous.
Okay, thank you. Other questions from commission members?
Mr. Chair, I have a, a question. I mean, I know it says it's landlocked, but do you have an easement to get to the property or?
Technically, I, I'm sorry. So technically, I do not have an easement. So when I purchased that property, oh, it's probably 20 years ago. At that time, I went to my neighbors. And it was legally drawn up, even though it's technically not a, a recorded easement. But, you know, I didn't, I didn't want to, you know, ruffle any feathers with my neighbors and try to push an easement in there. So I just worked out an agreement with them that I have access to the property.
I guess I question how that was recorded.
It's not recorded.
When you, when you bought the property, when you bought it 20 years ago, once it got recorded at the county?
It got recorded, yeah, I'm sure it got recorded without an easement attached to it, though.
You know that for a fact?
Right, yes. And when you bought that, was it its own 40? It wasn't included with any other property? It wasn't a land split, yeah?
It was a single.
It was a single parcel. And there are these around the county that are pre-existing parcels that are landlocked. And, and you're able to buy and sell them, you know?
And the reason I ask is, I believe Danny Crowe would have been the, the guy down at the county those years that would have recorded these things or, he told me in that timeframe that he will never record a property or let a property be recorded without a legal access to it.
Sure.
That's why I'm questioning it, how it would have not recorded without a legal easement.
And if it was a land split, if we're creating a new parcel, absolutely. We would require an easement or road frontage or something. But I'm guessing, I didn't look at this for sure, but I'm guessing this was an existing landlocked parcel that existed for decades.
Mr. Chair?
Joe.
Say, Joe, when you bought it, was it T-20 when you bought it?
That I do not know.
Okay, because it, it's interesting, because this area of the county, north of St. Stephen, has a number of those T-20s. And, and I was just wondering how that ever happened. Because, you know, would, this parcel, would it have been considered AEG? Or I don't even, would it, would it be considered recreational or seasonal or?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I, I mean, if I was to guess, I would say it was probably, it was probably AEG when I bought it. Probably, but I don't know that for sure, just because the people I bought it from had other farmland.
Okay.
And it, it may just have been part of their farm.
And then, do you think it was intended actually to be, to be a building site or, or not? I mean, the, the access that you have, was it?
Well, and, and that's just it. And that's why I, I don't really have a problem taking, it has two building entitlements on it.
Okay.
You know, that's what, T-20 has two building entitlements. So like I said earlier, I, I'm not a fan of giving up two building entitlements just to get one. Because, I mean, those building entitlements have value. And if I was going to build on that property, at that point, I would drive an easement into it. But that's not my intention. And I don't ever foresee anybody building on that property.
Right. And then the entitlement, though, as the rule is now, would have to be abutting, as you heard earlier. So that if somebody wanted that entitlement, they would have to be an abutting property, unless they had the property similar to you for ext, over three years.
You mean, as far as me reselling that property?
Correct.
Correct, I understand that. And I've considered all that. It's just that, like I said, the location of that property makes it just logistically, electrical, you know, it's just, road, it, it's difficult.
Wetland issues, too?
Um, there's some wetlands on it, but it has, you know, it's probably a third high ground.
Okay.
You know? Or somewhere in that neighborhood.
Thank you.
Other questions from the commission? Other questions from the commission? Finally, anything from the audience? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close a public hearing.
Rich moves, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Further discussion? All right, hearing, hearing done, let's move on to the findings of fact. Is the proposal consistent with the zoning ordinance? Why or why not?
Well, Mr. Chair, this is kind of a confusing question. Criteria for rezoning is, according to the zoning ordinance, any change to the zoning map shall be in compliance with the county comprehensive plan. So we maybe should have asked that question first, if it's compliant with the comprehensive plan, I guess. So I don't really have an answer to the ordinance question. But it, but it could be, depending on how we answer the next questions.
Okay. So let's move on to question two, and we'll come back to question one. Does the proposal conform to the comprehensive plan of the county? Please list applicable sections for or against.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I, I guess I would, looking at, I would say it does. Looking at agriculture use policies, item number five. And there are also, under living goals, residential policies, one, two, and three would be applicable, I believe.
And I guess Jennifer and Angie, another question on this. We're trying to clean up these transitions, right? They're, they're sort of an artifact. So we're trying to...
The T-20 district?
Yeah.
Yeah, that is a closed district, so we aren't rezoning to T-20 anymore. So...
So, so we're sort of moving away from that.
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, could I just ask staff a question?
Yeah.
These zones were all put in place like 25 years ago, in 2020, correct?
Correct.
I believe the townships were involved with creating these zoning maps at that time? I mean, Avon Township was where I'm from. I mean, is there any merit to going back to these townships? And revisiting the, the whole thing? Or do you think they would just open a can of worms?
Uh, Mr. Chair, member Gondringer, so why don't we do one a year? And we'll get done in about 34 years. No, I, I joke because actually Melrose, I'm going out to Melrose Township beginning of December. They want to clean up part of their, part of their township with their zoning. And so I'll ask them if they have an opportunity, if they want to do anything else. I mean, we did that maybe 15-ish years ago. But it's only when the townships come to us and they want to change something, then we'll look at it. But you'll see Melrose coming up in the next year or so. So, otherwise, I think we're going to just go with what we, what we currently have, unless it's an issue for the township.
I mean, what I see what's happening is, and we've got three rezoning requests tonight. We'll be doing a lot of spot zoning if we, if we do this. I mean, I understand, if my recollection goes back 25 years, the way it worked was, you know, you'd have like an, an R-10 in this case, and then a T-20 as we build out, and then the A40s, kind of a transition area to, from AEG to residential. Avon Township didn't do that. We didn't have R-10s or, or any 20-acre parcels. Do I have to push my button?
I don't want to be heard.
Uh, Mr. Chair, member Gondringer, it really kind of boils down to maybe when we do our next comprehensive plan, because townships shouldn't just be coloring changes on a map, right? It should be consistent with the comp plan and the comp plan map, which, I mean, our comp plan's already, what, five years old? So, I mean, that will be happening in the next handful of years. And so I would say we wouldn't want to, kind of to your point on the findings, let's not change the map before we look at the comp plan. So I wouldn't sell that to the townships until we did a new comp plan and really involve them.
All right, circling back to question number one. Is the proposal consistent with the zoning ordinance? Why or why not?
Let's say yes.
Do we have a why or why not?
I, Mr. Chair, I would agree with Mr. Gondringer on this. In regards to when we did the 2040 plan, I believe this area was one of those earmarked or tagged as an area that'll be under transition. As people seek those living areas in a rural setting, we see the pressure going to the west of St. Cloud and north of Sartell. So you're in one of those areas that is going to be in transition for a number of years. So I think it fits.
All right, thank you. Is the proposal compatible with the existing neighborhood? Why or why not?
Mr. Chair, it's compatible in regards to you have a number of homes in the area that are kind of in a rural setting there.
And also, I would add to that, we are taking away a building entitlement. So we're not going to see additional growth.
So. That can change, too, in the future.
Yes. How has the applicant demonstrated that standards and criteria stated in the ordinance will be satisfied?
Mr. Chair, I believe that going from two building credits, T-20 to R-40, one building credit on a tract that is landlocked and almost impossible to build on at this time, would meet the criteria of the zoning ordinance?
Thanks, Dave. Are there any other issues pertinent to this matter?
Uh, yes, the township advisors or township government approved.
And Mr. Chair, I would just like to point out that it is spot zoning.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve or deny recommendation to the county board.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve this request to rezone.
I will second that.
Leroy approves, Rich seconds, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. This will be before the county board December 2nd. So thank you for your time.
That'll be an afternoon meeting, because we got truth in taxation that night, so. It shouldn't be an issue.
Is there another one that I have to fill out for that meeting? I don't have to do anything? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, next we have a rezoning from Corey Yamri. Is Corey with us? If you want to take the applicant? Do we have any speaker cards out there? All right, so seeing none, we'll move toward... All right, so seeing none, we'll move towards, we're going to consider a rezoning request submitted by Corey Yamri of Rice, Minnesota, according to sections 4.1, 4.10 of the Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance Number 439, to rezone approximately 10 acres from the A-40 zoning district to the residential R-10 zoning district. The property is part of the northwest corner of the southwest corner, lying east of 65th Avenue. In section 29 of Brockway Township, the property address is 6494 of County Road 5, Rice, Minnesota. So roll call for folks who made it there. Jason Meaderman, I did. David?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Leroy?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
And Joe?
Yes.
Okay, staff report.
Okay, so this property is, it's a 74-acre parcel along with a 30-acre piece they have to the west. So in total, it's 104 acres. It has one home on the property, and it has a restriction on 38 acres from a previous land split that was done. So that was in 2007. So there aren't any building entitlements available on the property. So the property owner is requesting to rezone 10 acres to R-10 to gain one building entitlement. And if approved, they would subdivide one new lot for a new home. An alternative to rezoning is to obtain a building entitlement from an adjacent property. There is one property to the west that has an entitlement available. So as you can see, the property is along County Road, well, so the 74 acres is at the corner of County Road 5 and 65th Avenue. The area being rezoned, requested to be rezoned, is on 65th Avenue, Township Road. The property is wooded with some grassland on that particular 10-acre area. The 74 acres has a feedlot on it. The 10 acres requested to be rezoned, though, does not encroach on that feedlot setback at all. So there would not be a setback impact. There are about 42 homes and one animal feedlot within a half mile of the property. The property is surrounded by a mixture of farmland, woodland, rural residential lots, quite a mix of uses. And then the city of St. Stephen is a quarter mile to the west. That's the pink area on the map is city limits. And then on the zoning map, so you can see that it's a bit of a mixed bag as well, so it's got some T-20 abutting it, some A-40, and then we've got residential 10 and residential 5 in close proximity as well. So under the current ag 40 zoning, they have one residential building entitlement, which is already used. And if the rezoning is approved, they will have one additional building entitlement. On the comp plan, the future land use map, this is in an ag rural area, like the previous request. So it's the yellow with green conservation or natural resource overlay. That's the future land use plan map. The orange that you see adjacent is transitional, which is a buffer around the city of St. Stephen. And then the brown or grayish area to the east is concentrated residential. The LISA score on this was 64.5, just under our threshold of 65. Brockway Township did recommend approval of the rezoning. And that's all I have.
Applicant, introductions, name and address.
Corey Yamri. Corey Yamri, 6494 County Road 5, Rice, Minnesota.
Anything to add to the staff report?
No.
Okay. We'll open the public hearing. Anybody from the public here to contribute? Anyone from the public? Questions from the commission members?
I have, I have a question of the applicant. Did you own the property in 2007, when the other, that parcel was split? And you didn't own the property then? Okay.
So the staff report indicates there is a building entitlement adjacent to the parcels. Have you asked the owner for that, if they would sell that?
Yeah, they don't want to.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, Corey, I noticed there were some flags on the property out there. What were those flags marking?
We just kind of marked it out to see what it would look like with a, for a building, and then
Drain field or?
Yeah, then we had WATAB come out just to check, to make sure it was buildable, and the septic could go on it.
Okay.
We just did it just in case it would freeze up before this meeting or whatever.
Sure, sure, okay. I was just curious, because it looked like, oh, yeah, that's the piece we're talking about. And I just thought, well, they're not going to start digging, are they?
No, we just wanted to make sure that it was
Buildable, yeah, sure, okay.
Other questions from the commission? Comments? Final questions from the public? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to close.
I'll make a motion to close.
Rich moves?
I'll second it.
Leroy seconds, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Further discussion from the commission? Oh, yes, site visits.
We did that.
Yeah, we did?
Mm-hmm.
Findings of fact.
Uh, where are my findings of fact? Well, let's go ahead and start with number two again, like we did last time. So, does the proposal conform to the comprehensive plan of the county? Please list applicable sections for or against.
Mr. Chair, I don't think it does. Under agricultural goals, number three, retain areas with highly valued agricultural land or economically viable agricultural operations.
Thank you, Leroy. Others? All right. Is the proposal consistent with the zoning ordinance? Why or why not?
Mr. Chair, I would say as a general rule, the ordinance does allow for rezoning from ag 40 to R-10.
Thank you. Is the proposal compatible with the existing neighborhood? Why or why not?
Mr. Chair, again, I would say that it does. There are approximately 42 homes within a half mile of the property. So it's not heavy density, but it would seem to be conformed to what's out there.
Thank you. Jenny and Angie, can we, can I revisit, add to point number two?
Sure.
All right, so I'd like to add, living goals, number two, manage the impacts of growth and development on the counties of rural character and natural resources. We're in between two areas of growth here. So it is an ag zoning area, but there is substantial growth around it. So I don't think we're going to be changing the nature of the area much outside of its rural characteristics. And this is a woodland zone, so it's not actively managed at the time. So hopefully it won't be clear cut in the process of putting a house there. So it should maintain the characteristics of the site.
Can I clarify, Mr. Chair? So you're saying it is consistent with living goal number two?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
All right. Has the applicant demonstrated that standards and criteria stated in the ordinance will be satisfied? So I believe it will be. The standards and criteria, switching this from A-40 to R-10 will provide a single home entitlement, which will meet the R-10 area. And as long as they stay within the single entitlement, it will meet the standards of the ordinance. Other comments? Other issues pertinent to this matter?
Mr. Chair, this is spot zoning again. But in this case, unlike the previous hearing, if we rezone this to R-10, that will open up the rest of that property and the neighboring properties to R-10. So it's more than just allowing, in my view, we have to take the long, long-range view. Is this an area we want 10-acre lots? Because we will have them going forward. Because once you have an R-10, you can easily, the neighbor can easily get an R-10. Or this property could keep adding R-10s as you go along. So, but that's, I just want to point that out for being a pertinent issue.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chair, I would just state that I believe Brockway did approve this proposal.
Other additional factors pertinent?
Mr. Chair?
Joe?
Leroy, you're absolutely right. And not just to this piece of property, but, I mean, as we see that future growth, is that what we want to see? Is that what we are seeing? We have the same situation around St. Joel. And that whole section is that, yeah, these 10-acre parcels is the way it's going.
And if I could, Mr. Chair, that's why I brought up earlier that it's been 25 years since these zoning maps have been put together, and maybe it's time to revisit them.
Yeah.
Maybe this is a good place for R-10s.
Yeah, it's better than R-5, maybe.
Well, personally, I'd rather see R-5s, because I think R-10s is wasting farmland. I'd rather have R-5 zone than an R-10. And Avon Township didn't allow, 25 years ago, we didn't allow R-10s or transitional 20s. It's either R-5 or A-40. Because 10 acres is almost too much grass to cut, if you will. You know, and it's kind of a waste of, you could get two homes on that property instead of one.
All right, hearing no others, I would entertain a motion to approve or deny the request to forward this to the county board.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Rich moves, do we have?
I'll second.
Dave seconds, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Do we need a roll call?
Yes, please.
Okay. Jason Meaderman, vote in favor, yes. Dave Bentrud?
In favor, yes.
Dave Nafla?
In favor.
Leroy?
Opposed.
Rich?
Uh, in favor.
All right, so that's one, two, four to one. All right, motion passes. This will go before the county board on December 2nd. Thank you for your time. All right, our next is Carol and Clark Jones. Carol? Are there any speaker comments or cards? If you have any speaker cards, raise your hand. All right. So we are here to consider a rezoning request submitted by Carolyn Clark Jones of Clearwater, Minnesota, according to sections 4.10 of the Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance Number 439, to rezone approximately 40.50 acres of the A-40 zoning district to the residential R-10 zoning district. The property is part of government lots 3 and 4, lying north and south of Lake Mariah Road on both Crooked Lake and Mariah Lake, in sections 8 of Linden Township. The property address is 18564 Lake Mariah Road of Clearwater, Minnesota. Folks who visited? I did. David Bentrud?
Did not.
Dave Nafla?
Yes.
Leroy Gunnringer?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes, I did.
And Joe? We have lost our county commissioner.
Mr. Chair, just for the record, Commissioner Persky is leaving to go to the township officers' meeting in Freeport. So he is, that was planned.
I guess I will excuse the absence.
You better drive fast.
He didn't even say goodbye. All right. So, staff report.
Okay, thank you. This property, under consideration, is 40.5 acres. And the request is to rezone the entire property to, from ag 40 to R-10. It has one home on it right now, which uses up the current building entitlement. If the rezoning is approved, the applicant plans to build a new home on the property. I should clarify, the applicant plans to sell the existing house with 10 acres and then build a new home. An alternative to rezoning is to obtain a building entitlement from an adjacent property owner. There are several contiguous properties in this situation that have entitlements available. So the property is on Lake Mariah Road, which is a township road. And as you can see, it abuts two lakes, Lake Mariah and Crooked. It's entirely wooded. There is an area of wetland in the middle as well, and then a lot of wetland along Crooked Lake. There's no feedlots within 700 feet of this property. There are more than 80 homes within a half mile of the property, and no animal feedlots. The zoning in this area is A-40 to the northwest and south. And then as you go east, it becomes R-5 and R-1 around Long Lake. It is in the shoreline overlay district of the two lakes there. So if the rezoning were to be approved, they would be allowed four residential dwellings units. Or if a cluster development was done, they could have up to six lots there. When we look at the comprehensive plan, the future land use map, this is in an ag rural area on the future land use plan map with natural resource overlay, again, similar to the last two requests. The LISA score for the property is 39.05, so quite low. Quite a bit under our threshold of 65. Linden Township did recommend approval of the rezoning. And that's all I have.
Applicant, name and address, please.
I'm sorry.
Name and address?
Carol Jones, 18564 Lake Mariah Road, Clearwater, Minnesota, 55320.
Thank you. Anything to add to the staff report?
And I'm really sorry, I'm, I don't know why, but I can't hear you guys very well.
Anything to add to the staff report?
Not really.
Okay.
I hope you can understand what we're trying to do. We're not getting any younger. And we have a three-story, three-level home at this point. And that's our purpose behind it, is to build some, in the future. And the rest of it is something for our children and grandchildren, you know.
Okay. Thank you. Comments from the public? Comments from the public? This is your chance. You can be famous. Commission questions?
I have one, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Or at least one. Why did you decide R-10 and not like an R-5, which is right beside?
Because Linden Township has, Linden Township, I believe, has an ordinance that you can only build on 10.
I don't, I'm not aware of that. I don't think they have an ordinance to that effect.
You, well, that's been my understanding, and I believe you can certainly, you know, get a variance or something on that order. I do know, just down the road from us, somebody had built, and they purchased land credits, I believe from her father or whatever, because of the fact that it is 10 out there. I could be wrong. I don't totally keep up on the township thing, but the last I knew, it's 10 acres unless you get a variance.
I had not heard that either.
A question for staff. So they are seeking the R-10 for an additional building entitlement. So, they are seeking the R-10 for an additional building entitlement. Can we do the rezoning and offer one building entitlement? Or because they're breaking it into four, or we're doing it to R-10s, do they automatically get the four entitlements? So can we limit that?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if 40 acres is rezoned to R-10, then they get four. We can't limit it.
Okay.
Unless the rezoning were to just be perhaps for 10 acres to go to R-10, then they would just get one.
Okay. And then question for the applicant. So there are entitlements around the property. Have you asked anybody if they would sell you one of their entitlements?
Did I ask the people around what?
So there are entitled, there are building entitlements around the parcel.
Oh, yes.
Did you ask anybody if they would sell you one of their entitlements?
No, I guess, Mr. Chair, I don't understand why we would do that if we have 40 acres.
So, and, Jenny, correct me if I'm wrong. So if you build the, if you purchase the entitlement from one of your neighbors, you can then build on your current plot without having to rezone. Did I say that right?
That's correct. That would eliminate the need for rezoning.
Well, I can understand that, except for the fact that, you know, the expenditures just to get this rezoning and all of the other things that go along with it, I mean, this is a, this is a, not a one-month kind of thing, we're talking a couple of years here. When you go through all of those expenses, and then to land credits, which would be the R, try to get another R-10 from, or get, you know, an R-10 from somebody, they're not going to sell it that cheap. And I guess that's, that's the concept behind it. We would like to sell the existing homestead that we have with 10 acres, and then the other 30, there would be three more building credits. We then in turn, I mean, you know, we wouldn't, we wouldn't do that. We don't have the concept of selling it to anybody else. But I can tell you this, I can tell you, the people who bought from her, that just built a house down there, I don't know, two years ago or so, they had a hard time trying to find a land credit because they didn't have enough land to meet the 10-acre criteria. So they bought land credit. They didn't buy, they didn't buy a building site, and, you know, credit, they, as far as I understood, they, and I really don't know, because it's really none of my business. But I do know that they had purchased something, according to James in the Township, in order to put their building up. But for us to, to go the expenditures when we have 40 acres, we chose to go the rezoning route, I guess is what we're looking at.
Okay.
And to put something, you know, on the other 30. And it was suggested by the Township that if you're going to rezone, that it should be the four, the R-10s.
Would you be willing to parcel off an R-10? So rezone one R-10 and leave the rest of the parcel intact?
But what would the, you cannot do a 30 in an, in a A, or, I'm sorry, I'm not really understanding this whole thing, but it, it's my understanding that I suppose we could do an R-30.
Mr. Chair, if I could try to explain?
Yeah.
The last hearing we had, the property owner owned like 130 acres.
Yeah.
And he just took 10 acres of it and had it rezoned R-10.
Mm-hmm.
So he only has 10 acres out of his 130 that's zoned R-10, and the rest is A-40. What the chairman is asking you is, would you be willing to take 10 acres and rezone it R-10, and the other 30 would remain A-40? Which, which, which just is a zoning classification as to how many homes you can build on it per, per credit, I guess.
I understand.
So you still, but, but by doing that, you would lose the two building credits. Right now, you're thinking, if you rezone the whole property R-10, you will get three additional building entitlements. If, if we would just, if you would rezone one 10-acre parcel, you would just get one more entitlement, and the other two would remain as A-40, and they wouldn't be buildable. Just.
I understand that. I guess at this point, and I, you know, confer with you folks that know more about all of these rulings, I'm also, we're also looking into the future for our children and our grandchildren. Now, to go through all of this again, if they wanted to, it was suggested again by the Township that the, you know, if you've got four R-10s versus a 10 and a 30, then if down the road, in the future, if our children or grandchildren wanted to do something, they would have to go through this again.
Correct.
Is there a reasoning why, you know, the application has the four 10s versus 30 and a 10?
I guess the chair would have to explain his reasoning.
So, I mean, the reason I ask is, so, on your application, you indicate you're looking for one additional building entitlement here. But it sounds, based on what you're saying, in the future, you want the flexibility to have the remaining two?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And, and, you know, I found something out, I guess, and, I don't know if this, I had, I did not research it. There's something about land credits, they have to be adjacent to your land?
Correct.
So, realistically, there is no one around us that, first of all, would even do an R, you know, would, would probably sell a credit off, as far as I know. But even if down the road, we couldn't even use them as land credits to somebody, because it would have to be adjacent to ours. And at this point, I'm not sure where anybody would get a land credit from us, because they didn't have enough. Does that make sense?
Nope.
I mean, where our house exists right now, there's absolutely no way anybody can build there, because across the road, there's a swamp, the lake is to the west, there's wetland to the south, and wetland to the north. It's on a knoll. So that would be the 10 acres that we're looking, you know, to go with the house if we sell it. And then to the north, up there, is where we would like to, towards Lake Mariah, put a very, very small place. Like I said, I'm not getting any younger, and it's not easy to take care of a three-story house.
Okay, thank you. Other questions from the commission? Other questions? Questions from the public? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move we close the public hearing.
Leroy moves. Rich seconds. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing closed. Further discussion?
Well, I'm just going to state again, this is spot zoning, but I might sound a little hypocritical, but I think they should have, this property should be rezoned R-5, like the neighboring properties. But if, I'm, if, if R-10 is what she's asking for, that's what we have to deal with tonight.
Other questions? All right. Hearing none, I'll move to the findings of fact, and again, we'll flip it, so number two will be the beginning. Does the proposal conform to the comprehensive plan of the county? Please list applicable sections for or against.
Mr. Chair, like the previous one, I would say it does, under living goals, under rural residential policies, Items 1, 2, and 3 would be what I would list.
I'm going to say, based on living goal number two, which is manage the impacts of growth and development on the county's rural character, dividing this 40 into four, this 40, A-40 into four R-10s potentially is a substantial disturbance to this region, should we get three new houses in here. So I'm going to say, based upon living goal number two, it does not conform to the plan of the county. Others? All right, let's circle back to number one. Is the proposal consistent with the zoning ordinance? Why or why not?
I believe the ordinance does allow for, in certain or most situations, rezoning from A-40 to R-10.
Thanks, Dave. Is the proposal compatible with the existing neighborhood? I'm going to say it's not, because this is a pretty remote section. So potentially building three additional sites here is going to increase traffic on the road, and take what's a beautiful forested area and make it a more residential impact zone. So I'm going to say it is not.
Well, I guess, the reporter doesn't say it, but, you know, across, what lake is that again? Is it Crooked Lake? I mean, there is a, on Eaglewood, I mean, there is a rather large, looks like, housing complex, not all that far away. I, I don't know, I feel like it's consistent to me.
Okay. Thanks, Dave. How has the applicant demonstrated that standards and criteria stated in the ordinance will be satisfied?
Mr. Chair, I would say, in the description and how the client is going to use their land, and the reasons.
Okay. Thanks, Rich. Any other issues pertinent to this matter, if applicable?
Township recommended approval.
Any other items?
This is more of a comment than a issue, was, it's, it's really interesting. I was opposed to the last rezoning, because I, I favor ag, because I'm from a farm, and so I put a lot of value on protecting farmland, and, and Jason and I, you know, you put value, more value on the nature, the wooded land and things, which is fine. We, and that's what makes this, this board and boards like this work, because you have differing opinions.
Yep, yep.
I would just point out it's spot zoning.
All right. Moving on, so, do I, do we have a motion to approve or deny the recommendation to the county board on this request?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the client's request.
Rich provides a motion to approve the request. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Dave seconds. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, aye?
Aye.
Roll call. Jason Wienerman, opposed. David Bentrude?
Support.
Dave Nafla?
Opposed.
Leroy Gondrigger?
In favor.
Rich Blankish?
In favor.
Three to two. Right?
Correct. All right, the motion passes.
Motion passes. So this will go before the county board on December 2nd. So, you're good. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Wow. I don't know what you guys were saying, but thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, so agenda item number four, we have Recorie's Future Farmers of America Ag Issues Team coming to talk to us today about on-farm anaerobic digesters. So there's a whole bunch of you.
Can I use this area? Would that be?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, so, yes, there are a number of people here with the Recorie FFA, but we should have them speak into the mic, otherwise nothing will get picked up.
Okay.
Is that going to work?
We do not.
But we can swing it.
There's a microphone at the podium.
There's three of them over there.
Or could they sit here?
Yeah, absolutely.
100%. Yeah. And then I will introduce.
So as they're setting up, how do you want to handle this? Is this a presentation to us? Do you want us to ask questions of your students? How would you like to do this?
This is a practice presentation for them. They are competing in what's called a leadership development event for FFA, and it's, the competition is called the Agricultural Issues Forum. So they choose a topic, and they present the pros and cons of that, that topic. And the goal is for them to cover as many pros and cons as they can. They do not come to a consensus. So their setting is a public hearing, which you will see in their skit, and when they get judged at the state competition, the judges will basically look at the merit of the arguments, how they present it, and how they answer questions at the end. So if you do have questions, that would be terrific, and I'm not sure you've had to deal with any anaerobic digester questions yet. I know there are some coming up in Stearns County, so I'm assuming you have. So if you especially notice topics that we're not covering, that you think are important to the question of whether or not anaerobic digesters are helpful or harmful to the community, we would especially appreciate that, because this, as I said, is practice, and it helps us round out our arguments even further.
Perfect.
So, I will have each of the kids introduce themselves, so you know who they are and what their role is in this presentation.
Let's play this as reality, okay? So, agenda item number four today, before the planning commission, we are going to be hearing from the Recorie FFA Ag Issues Team to discuss the pros and cons of anaerobic, on-farm anaerobic digesters. They are going to present us with the pros and cons, and then should we have questions, we will entertain them after the fact. Because this is an educational opportunity, we will not have comments from the public, but they will be from the board. So please introduce yourselves, and then we'll begin with your presentation.
I'm, I'm Lillian Ludwig. I am in ninth grade, and my role is a concerned mother.
I'm Brooke Lozo. I'm in 10th grade, and I'm a lake lady.
I'm Katie Lozo. I'm in ninth grade, and I'm the commissioner.
I'm Izzy Lawr. I'm in ninth grade, and I'm the project developer.
I'm Kylie Christensen, and I'm the dairy farmer, and I'm in eighth grade.
I'm Sam Anderson. I'm a 10th grader, and I'm the crop farmer.
Thank you. So you may begin.
Good evening. This public hearing of the Stearns County Board of Commissioners will come to order. Today, we are here to discuss a request for a conditional use permit related to an anaerobic digester proposed for Christiansen Dairy Farms. Before we get into an overview of the facility, it is important that everyone here understands the rules of this public hearing. The public hearing provides an opportunity for the public, all of you, to voice your concerns related to the proposed on-farm anaerobic digester. Understanding where the public stands on the permitting request will provide me and my fellow county commissioners with an assessment of the pros and cons as we determine if the permit were approved, would this anaerobic permit were approved, would this anaerobic digester be helpful or harmful to our community. It is important that this hearing remains civil and respectful towards others. In this case, ABC Renewables is requesting a conditional use permit associated with the Christiansen Dairy's feedlot permit. We have a representative from ABC here today to provide an overview of the project and to address any concerns raised during the public hearing.
Hello. My name is Izzy Lar, and I am a representative of ABC Renewables. To start with, I'd like to provide an overview of what anaerobic digestion is, and then share more detailed information about this particular project. Anaerobic digestion is a natural process where organic material is broken down by bacteria in the absence of oxygen. A typical digester processes organic materials such as manure, food waste, and grease. This process produces two main products: biogas, which can be used as a source of fuel, heat, and electricity, and digestate, a nutrient-rich material that can be used for farm bedding, fertilizer, and more. ABC Renewables began this permit process a year ago to build a digester near Cold Spring, Minnesota. Because it utilizes manure and food waste, the project also went through an extensive permit process with the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, including a public comment period following a 50-page environmental preview. This project with the Christiansen Dairy Farm will use the manure from their 500 cows and combine it with 290 tons of food and beverage waste daily, generating about 270,000 mm BTU of renewable natural gas, or RNG, annually, which will be injected into the Center Point Pipeline. This is enough to power over 3,000 homes in the Center Point Region. This is a win-win for local farms and communities.
Thank you, Ms. Lar. We'll now open the floor to hearing from those in the room. Please tell us who you are before stating your position and concerns. To begin, let's hear from the Christiansen family, who is partnering with ABC Renewables on this project.
My name is Kylie Christensen. As mentioned, our farm has about 500 dairy cows. I'm a fourth-generation farmer, and my farm means the world to me and my family. I always strive to do what's best for our family farm and our community. That's why I am partnering with ABC Renewables to build a digester. Thirty years ago, when my dad started farming, the state had around 14,000 dairy farms. Today, there are only 1,600. The economy facing dairy farmers is tough. In the past 20 years, only four years have been profitable. This project includes not only a ground lease for the facility, but also a farm products agreement for the manure, helping stabilize my farm's income. In addition, I can use the solids from the digester as a bedding and the liquid digestate as a nutrient-rich fertilizer, thereby reducing my input costs.
Hello. My name is Brooke Losso, and I am the Lake Association President. I live on Big Lake and am located within a mile of the proposed digester site. I'm against this project because of the threat that there will be water pollution that will escape into my lake. This threat is real. In 2019, Power Knot, a waste solution company, reported that 10,000 fish were found floating in a river due to a spill of digestate. We need to protect our precious waterways in this state. According to Friends of the Mississippi River, 40% of Minnesota's lakes are polluted, the main causes being nitrate and phosphorus pollution from excess farm runoff causing toxic algae blooms. How much more nitrogen and phosphorus will be added as a result of this digester? It utilizes three times the amount of waste going in with the addition of food waste, so doesn't that mean there will be three times the amount of nutrients needing to be applied to the land surrounding my lake? How can our soils handle this amount of nutrient loading? How can we ensure that this doesn't lead to further impairment of our waters around here? I'll tell you how, by not approving this permit request.
My name is Sam Anderson, and I'm a local crop farmer. I grow corn and soybeans on 1,000 acres. As you may or may not know, crop farmers are having a hard time selling our products above the cost of production, which means I lose money on every bushel of corn and soybeans that I sell. One of the factors of this poor economic situation is the high cost of inputs like synthetic commercial fertilizers. I was overjoyed when ABC Renewables reached out to me to sign a long-term contract to take their digestate rather than be subjected to the volatile fertilizer market. Did you know that Minnesota farmers rely on fertilizer that must be hauled in by rail or truck from the Gulf Coast or halfway around the world? This is because they are made from petroleum. I'm happy to have a local and stable source of high-quality digestate fertilizer. So, to address my fellow citizens' concerns, I will gladly apply the extra nutrients coming out of this digester rather than having to apply synthetic commercial fertilizers.
My name is Lillian Ludwig. I live right across the road from this potential digester site. I'm against this project for the safety of my four children. There will be up to 15 trucks a day hauling food waste from the metro area, which will take a toll on our small county road and pose a danger to my children when they play in our front yard, which runs right up to the road. I'm also worried that the farm will become a much larger size. I'm all for small farms, but aren't these digesters currently operating at the very large dairies in western Minnesota? Are digester companies promoting the growth of these farms and turning them into mega dairies? I do not want an industrial waste facility like this right next to my home.
Wait just a minute. I would like to weigh in here. My goal is to remain the same size and not add additional cows. Our current size allows me and my family to manage the operations, herd health, and nutrition, yet I can employ additional people on my farm to help out, so we can also do things that most families enjoy doing, like watching our kids play sports and helping them with their FFA and 4H activities versus never leaving the farm. That's the nice thing about ABC Renewables, as many of the existing on-farm digesters in Minnesota are at very large dairies with as many as 10,000 cows. But, ABC's model of using a majority of food waste feedstock makes it possible for a smaller farm like mine to host a renewable natural gas system.
ABC prides itself in being a good neighbor. We have zero complaints by neighbors in the vicinity of our digesters. Our company owns and operates 32 digesters across the United States. Moreover, we have recycled over 1,240,000 tons of food waste, and that number keeps growing. Did you know that almost 40% of our food is wasted annually? This accounts for almost 11% of total greenhouse gas emissions like methane and carbon dioxide. Using anaerobic digesters is better for the environment. It can reduce carbon emissions substantially. The state of Minnesota saw the potential for renewable energy through its early support of biofuels and its recent nation-leading Natural Gas Innovation Act, encouraging utilities like Center Point to get behind innovative renewable natural gas projects. Projects like this one will help Minnesota achieve its goal of being net zero by 2050.
This project will be a nuisance to neighbors. The odor and noise pollution is a major concern for my family. My cousin from Colorado sent me an article from Denver newspaper. In the article, neighbors of the operation had filed 266 complaints about the stench of the digester interfering with their daily lives. If this many people's lives are disrupted, what is to be expected from my family? Not to mention what will happen to me and my neighbor's property values. Studies from the European Union, where they have a lot more digesters, have shown that the closer a property is to a large digester, the more likely their property value will decrease. Is this project going to result in a reduction of my home's value? I implore the county commissioners to say no to this permit request.
My family and Kylie's family have been farming these lands long before any of you other neighbors were here. This land has been zoned for agricultural use, and this project is the future of agriculture. And let's not forget the importance of property rights. A landowner has the right to efficiently manage their private property and derive maximum economic and environmental benefit from their land and waste streams. Also, Minnesota has the right to farm law that protects farmers from the nuisance complaints. For me, this project is a please in my backyard, not a not in my backyard. I say yes to this project and encourage the commissioners to approve the permit request.
Maximum environmental benefit? I'm not sure if anyone in this room has done their research, but ABC Renewables is owned by a large asset firm. According to Client Earth, this asset firm engages in greenwashing because they have poured over $1 billion into fossil fuel companies like Shell and BP. These companies aren't saving the environment, they're protecting their own money and assets. Moreover, ABC has partnerships with multinational corporations such as Starbucks, AstraZeneca, Chobani, Unilever, and even IKEA. I'm all for renewable energy, but why are all these companies interested in this project? And don't you sell your gas to California as part of your California low-carbons fuel standard? This energy won't even be used locally. For these reasons and the ones I mentioned previously, I encourage you to vote no to the approval of this permit.
My family prides ourselves on being good stewards of the land. It is not right to categorize this project as greenwashing. In many ways, this project is an example of some of the very best recycling that can occur on a dairy farm. I've been practicing circular approaches for decades, carefully managing the manure nutrient loads that I apply to my crops each year as allowed by my farm's nutrient management plan, which is overseen by the county's feedlot officer. Our farm is also Minnesota Ag Water Quality Certified, recognizing our practices such as crop covers, reduced tillage, and buffer strips to help maintain wealthy waterways, healthy waterways. This project won't change that. Digestors work well for farmers, their communities, and the environment. Please vote yes to approve this permit request.
The benefits of this digester far away the potential risk. The stories that some of the speakers have shared during this hearing have been of the most extreme and negative examples of poorly managed digesters. This is not ABC Renewables. Instead, we should be focusing on the benefits, such as the economic development generated by this project. This anaerobic digester will create so many jobs for the area, including 100 construction jobs and 10 permanent operational roles. In addition, because of the truck traffic, we will be upgrading the roads from gravel to paved. The California Low Carbon Fuel Standard also came up in the comments. I want to address this head-on. While this project can capture higher RNG prices because it can access the national RIG pipeline infrastructure, the gas will more than likely be consumed locally. The renewable fuels market is complicated, but I can assure you, Minnesota will benefit and so will the local economy here in Stearns County.
Thank you all. It is time to close the public comment portion of this hearing. You've all given us a great deal to think about. On one hand, on-farm anaerobic digesters promise a local solution to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, handle food waste, produce renewable energy, boost nutrient availability, improve the bottom line of both crop and livestock producers, and generate local economic impact and jobs. But on the other hand, on-farm anaerobic digesters, especially those that co-digest food waste, introduce more nutrients into an already nutrient-rich environment, create increased truck traffic, can threaten adjacent property values, and when managed improperly, can lead to odor, noise, and water pollution. You've given us a lot to think about. The public portion of this hearing is now adjourned.
Well done. So, any questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Chair, I would just like to say, we have six excellent candidates for this board in several years. I mean, I'm so impressed. Very impressed.
So, as a board member, couple of questions. So, this proposal seeks to be producing biogas, right? Which, if I understand right, is a flammable material. So, are there safety concerns should something happen to a leaky pipeline?
Yes, all of the digesters from our company are managed very efficiently and with staff that's very trained.
Okay. And then also, you indicate that you were talking about upgrading the roads.
Yes.
Have you spoken and gotten approval from the county or the township roads?
That may be something to look into.
Have I, ma'am?
So, maybe you can tell them a little bit about the project that inspired you. And maybe, Lilly, you can talk a little bit about your connection to digesters as well.
So, my uncle, he is a dairy farmer in Meeger County, near Litchfield. So, our kind of company is follow, like, based off of Vanguard Renewables. So, Vanguard Renewables is pairing with my uncle, Justin, to build an anaerobic digester on his farm of 900 dairy cows. So, we kind of base this project off of theirs. So, they're upgrading their roads, so we decided that would be a good touch to our project.
Oh, it's a great idea, yeah. Thank you.
My brother actually runs anaerobic digester in Cold Spring, so we were able to tour one and actually get to stand on top of a digester, just to see how it all works.
Cool. All right. Other questions from the board?
Is a herd that size large enough to create the density of natural gas? Is it, seemed like a smaller herd size made it likely that it might not be to that natural gas density level?
So, after some research, the kind of the minimum we figured out is that a minimum herd size would be 300 to 400 cows, and that's kind of like the minimum. But also, you can have a smaller farm and just take manure and waste from other farms and bring it in. And the kind of the smaller your herd, the bigger, the more you're gonna have to be hauling in from other places.
So, how would that be? There'd be like some kind of cooperative type arrangement? Or how would, how would you make that happen?
So, you'd figure out, you kind of have an arrangement or a contract with food companies. So, there's a creamery or, a creamery?
The brewery?
Well, there's like two examples. So, the creamery in Litchfield is, they were gonna pair with my uncle for this project, but then they decided that it would be better if they built their own digester. So, they're putting all their waste into that digester. And then, in Cold Spring, the brewery is bringing, is like, has a pipe and is pumping their waste into that anaerobic digester.
Could you talk a little bit more about the food waste that's going into this? That's something new to me.
There will be trucks of food waste coming from the metro area. I think it's like 15 a day. I don't really.
From Brooklyn Park, I think?
From Brooklyn Park. So, yeah, just food waste taken from there, being trucked to wherever the digester is.
From their what trucks?
So, the example of the project down in Meeger County is a co-digestor. And so, 75% of the feedstock going into the digester will be from food waste of, you know, companies like Pilgrim's Pride would be a good candidate, brewery waste. In the case of Vanguard Renewables, they have a reception site that they're building in Brooklyn Park, which will be capturing food waste from processing facilities, food and beverage processing facilities. And you can also collect food from retail shelves that have been expired. So, Vanguard has a facility in Massachusetts where they actually macerate product packaging to release all of the expired food and beverages, which is then trucked to farms where they have digesters. So, the co-digestion is a much more complicated system, but it does allow smaller farms to participate in the anaerobic digester market.
Just so I understand, is this, is this project introducing biogas into an existing pipeline system? Or are you talking about transporting it offsite somehow?
It would connect to a pipeline, and then it would just go to their, their.
So, who's responsible then for, like, maintaining the pipe so there's no leaks? Or who, is that the responsibility of the, of who?
So, in our skit, we're kind of having Center Point Energy do that, so I would assume that they would take care of the pipes, right?
Dave, I'd just like to make a comment. We approved the digester in the west, in west end of Stearns County here, what, about four or five years ago? And that one has teamed up two farmers, that sharing or supplying the manure and whatever. And that digester has a direct connection to Dooley Petroleum's pipeline.
We had one during, since I've been on the board, I think.
Yeah, and then we had an approval of another digester down around by Richmond, and they were going to truck the gas.
Okay, yeah, yeah, okay.
So, they're looking at different options.
Who's responsible for maintenance of the?
Of the pipeline? I don't know if Dooley Petroleum agreed to maintain the one that comes from their main line and to the farm. I don't know if that's, how that is.
Maybe staff would have answers to this, but I thought the one, that substation kind of that, that was permitted just west of Richmond, don't they truck the gas into there and inject it into the pipeline that goes by? So, it's not a pipeline, that one's not a pipeline from the farm. It gets hauled off the farm to.
I thought we had, I thought we had one that was, it was a line from the Kent. The digester. It was a line that went into a pipeline, but there was some question about the quality of the biogas might not meet the standard of natural gas. And that's, that was my rec, I'm not very experienced with it myself, but I just remember that issue being part of our discussion. The quality of the biogas might not meet. The quality of the ga, biogas might not meet the level of natural gas. And if you have a smaller herd operation, and I guess that, that's what's kind of prompted me.
Yeah.
I'm trying to cause you guys trouble.
So I, I work for the Agricultural Utilization Research Institute, so we've been working with a lot of digester projects, which is why I can answer some of these questions. But, um, cleaning up biogas is expensive. So it does require a certain scale, um, for the operation because you have, um, a lot of particulates. Um, you have to take out the carbon dioxide to do, to get to the methane, um, the pure methane that you need to be comparable with natural gas. So those are certainly expensive and that's why you see, um, larger digesters. And so the hub and spoke, you know, the community digesters, the co-digested, um, feedstocks, um, and the larger farms is really what we're seeing right now.
Do we want to vote on their proposal? I was thinking, um, I, I would like to entertain a motion to commend the Recore FFA Ag Issues Team for their presentation before us regarding the depth and competence of the skill they presented. I will even make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? So you have formally been commended for your efforts by the Stearns County Planning Commission. So thank you so much for your work.
And did you know, if you go to Stearns County website, meetings on demand, you can watch yourself on TV because these are recorded? Um, click on Planning Commission and, uh, you can, you can watch the whole meeting.
And it's not only you. So if you know who your competition is, you can send them the video and make them very scared.
I didn't want to tell you that before you started your presentation because I didn't want to make you nervous. But now that you know you're being filmed, you can talk.
Yeah, they didn't know that.
So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
All right. So we'll move on to accepting the minutes from October 16th, 2025 and October 23rd of 2025.
Mr. Chair, I was at both meetings and I would move to approve both, uh, in one motion if I can.
Dave moves for both. Do we have a second?
I will second it.
Rich seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on, item six, adjourning, uh, next meeting is December 18th.
Moved to adjourn.
Angie, do we know roughly who will be joining us?
Question was who is joining us or what?
What, uh, how many topics will we have?
Do we know, Jen?
For next month?
Yeah.
We've got a couple of rezonings. Um, it'll be a variety pack, uh, shoreline alteration, a feedlot and a couple of rezonings. I think five items.
Okay. Um, so the next date is December 18th. Um, so perhaps we can send out notifications to everybody reconfirming that date? So we have a full board?
Yes.
Um, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We are adjourned.
Good job in running this meeting.
Thank you.